Could everybody please stand and salute the flag with me? Thank you. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have one change. We're going to go ahead and pull 5.18. And then I just want to make a quick announcement. So, for the first four items on the agenda, under awards and presentations, items 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.4, if you can stick around, after 2.4, we're going to take a short intermission and go outside so our retiring police chief can do his final call on the radio. So we'll exit from that door. And then when we come back in, we'll have Kate out in the lobby for the Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and for Darren's retirement.
Thank you. Counsel, do I have approval of the agenda as a change?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as with the change.
With the change.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay, we'll go to number two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Number one is 2021 Firefighter of the Year Award. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and guests. It is my honor to announce firefighter Emil Diaz de Leon as the City of Kalinga Firefighter of the Year for 2021. Emil has been with the department since December of 2018 and exemplifies what a Kalinga firefighter should be. Emil's dedication to the department is demonstrated in his daily activity. Not a moment goes by where Emil is not doing something to make the department better. Whether it is perfecting his own skills or helping others, volunteering for projects to maintenance of apparatus and equipment, Emil is constantly busy in between calls working at making the department better. Emil has the desire to become a paramedic for the department, so much so that he is currently putting himself through paramedic school while working and supporting a family. He was always willing to help and has a passion for teaching others. During strike team season, Emil was always the first one to pick up shifts and help the department maintain daily staffing. On multiple occasions, Emil picked up shifts knowing that if we did not, we would have to down an ambulance. Emil did not want to reduce that service to the community so he would end up working those shifts. Emil has earned this award through a nomination by his peers. According to his peers, Emil is always ready to work and has a great attitude all of the time. His dedication and professionalism are noticed and makes them all want to be better themselves. He supports others to help them achieve their goals and supports the goals and visions of the department. Everything he does is either to better himself, the department, or the fire service as a whole. Please join me in congratulating Emil Diaz de Leon as the 2021 City of Kalinga Firefighter of the Year. So we got a plaque for Emil. It's basically presented to Emil Diaz de Leon, City of Kalinga, 2021 Firefighter of the Year. And then your certificate. Firefighter of the Year Certificate in recognition of your high standards and continuing excellence in fire protection and emergency medical assistance and to the outstanding contributions you give every day to the entire committee. Awarded to firefighter Emil Diaz de Leon.
Okay, Emil, would you like to say something?
Do you want to say anything?
Yes, absolutely. I really do appreciate this. It was something that was absolutely unexpected. And I can honestly say that I would not have been able to get to where I am without, you know, the wonderful encouragement from the chief, from my captains, and from my, most importantly, from my peers. And then, of course, thank you to the City of Kalinga for giving me a chance as a firefighter, being able to work for you. And unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it because my son is receiving an award tonight from the, receiving a principal's award. And my daughter opted to come in place of going there even though she was going to receive an award as well. But my wife, without her support, I would not have been here. And I still want to just acknowledge, even though that she's not here, I want to acknowledge that she is my number one support and I'm extremely happy that she is, that we're together. So thank you very much. I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Emil, and we appreciate what you do for the city. Emil, we really appreciate what you do for the city. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to 2021 Police Officer of the Year Award. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Take this off so I can breathe. Francisco? It is my honor to introduce the Kalinga Police Department 2021 Officer of the Year, K-9 Officer Francisco Barra. Officer Barra has been with the department since 2017 and has proven to be a capable police officer. Officer Barra's dedication to law enforcement, to the law enforcement profession shows every time he comes to work, Officer Barra is always willing to help the department and officers by taking extra shifts and ensuring there is proper coverage. Officer Barra is an active investigator. He takes the cases and utilizes his knowledge and experience to solve them and recover property, narcotics, and firearms. Officer Barra has been driven, has the drive and willingness to learn and the ambitions to promote. Officer Barra was selected as the department's Officer of the Year by his peers. His peers have said Officer Barra is a hard worker and deserves this award. They have also said that he has a good attitude and work ethic like no one else. Please join me in congratulating K-9 Officer Francisco Barra as being selected as the 2021 Kalinga Police, City of Kalinga's Police Officer of the Year. Then his certificate reads, Police Officer of the Year Certificate in recognition of your high standards and continuing excellence in serving and protecting and the outstanding contributions you give every day to the entire community. Award to K-9 Officer Francisco Barra.
I wrote something up.
Better be good.
You've got three minutes. I'm just kidding.
Just want to start off by saying thank you. I am honored to receive the Officer of the Year Award. The award to me holds a deep meaning. The award to me represents accomplishments and goals which I set for myself as a young police explorer going on ride longs with other officers. I knew then I wanted to become a police officer. I worked hard as an explorer to gain respect of the officers and the community. I put myself through college and continued to expand my education. The combination of perseverance, hard work, and opportunity fell in my favor when I was hired as a police officer for the City of Kalinga by Chief Blevins. He wasn't only my chief, but a mentor. He provided me with personal as well as professional support and continued to bring out the potential that I had in me as an officer. I will forever be grateful for Chief Blevins. I have within my tenure as a police officer responded to over 5,600 calls for service, conducted over 2,800 self-initiated investigations, made over 450 arrests, over 60 felony arrests, recovered over 1,000 grams of meth, 15 grams of heroin, 28 grams of cocaine, and recovered over 30 firearms as well as written over 50 search warrants leading to the recovery of narcotics and weapons, all with the assistance of my K-9 partner Eli. I am proud of my years of service and the legacy I will leave. However, I want the members of the community and members of the council to recognize first and foremost that my position as an officer is much more than a job or a career. It is my profession and my calling. This badge I wear proudly on my chest runs through my very fiber as a person and blood in my veins. I have only been an officer for about five years, but I have strived to prove it's not how long you've worn the badge, but what you've accomplished during the time you've worn the badge. I have reached many of goals which I set for myself when I became an officer for the City of Kalinga and have worked hard to raise the standard of policing here in Kalinga. I, as well as other members of the department, strive daily to raise the standard of our profession and change the stereotype that Kalinga PD is simply a stepping stone or training ground for officers. This is done in hopes to attract and retain quality officers with the same passion, commitment, and professionalism which our community deserves. I have also come to the realization that endeavor to achieve the aforementioned goes beyond my efforts and efforts of my fellow colleagues alone and that we are only one part of the equation. The other part of the equation are those who represent the city and the community. They need to have similar vision and strive to do what needs to be done to attract and retain quality officers. Quality officers should be encouraged to continue with the department and grow within the ranks instead of the current revolving door of officers we have going on to other agencies after serving the City of Kalinga for a short period of time. I know it can be challenging working for a smaller city and department. I also know there are always around these challenges. I know because I found a way. I found a solution to access training to work beyond the parameters of my job in order to better serve the community. I dedicated hundreds of hours of my personal time to bring criminals to justice and to generate ideas to improve morale and the department itself. During these times, my mindset was challenge accepted. In closing, I am grateful to the City of Kalinga and the bond that was created will always be with me. I accepted and overcame many challenges and I am proud of my legacy. I can only hope that proactive measures are taken and foundations are set for attracting and retaining quality officers. I will end my speech with one question which I hope echoes beyond words. Is my challenge accepted?
Okay, next we'll go to final remarks from Chief Darrell Blevins. Oh, I'm sorry. Introduce interim police chief Jose Garza. Sorry about that, chief.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, it is my honor to introduce you, the next interim police chief, Jose Garza.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and community. I want to say that it's an honor to be the interim chief and it's an honor to serve the community of Kalinga. I want to personally thank the city manager, Trejo, for giving me this opportunity and thank Chief Blevins for this opportunity because I would not be here if he didn't consider me to be the interim. And that's why I'm here. And I just want to say that I know that you don't want to leave this department. You have no choice. But we wish you well. And I know you love this department, the community, and I'm going to promise you that we're going to do the best we can here to continue your legacy. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item number four, our final remarks from Chief Darrell Blevins.
See if I can get through this. Good evening, council, citizens of Kalinga, and city staff. Tonight, I would like to start by saying thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this community for the past 28 years. Sir Robert Peel once said, "To recognize the power of the police, to fulfill their functions and duties, and is dependent upon the public's approval of their existence, actions and behavior, and their ability to secure and maintain public respect." If you ask most police officers why they chose law enforcement as a profession, they would say they wanted to drive fast and save lives. The real reason most of us became police officers was to make a difference in our communities and help people in need and fight crime. I started my law enforcement career 27 years ago, not for the money, power, or recognition. I became a police officer because the City of Kalinga took a chance on me and afforded me the opportunity to attend the police academy only to return to help the community in which I had lived in. During my career as a police officer, I have had the opportunity to supervise and lead some of the most extraordinary people in law enforcement profession. They are people of courage, compassion, heroism, humanity, of bravery, and brilliance, and determination, and precious old-fashioned thing called a duty. And that's the men and women standing across this back wall. I was never just a police officer. This profession was never just a job to me. I am just like the men and women standing in the back of this room. I am a Kalinga police officer who has worn the badge of my department on my uniform with honor and dignity. But most of all, I am a son, a husband, a dad, a brother, and to my grandchildren sitting in the back of here, I'm simply Papa D. I would like to ask the community to extend their support to the men and women who serve this community. Law enforcement or firefighters must be held to a higher standard and become accountable for their actions. You should expect the very best from them because you all deserve it. Police officers are under a tremendous amount of pressure and have to respond to unknown circumstances as well as having to make split-second decisions which can affect someone's life only to be second-guessed. The truth is, despite our human flaws, law enforcement officers will always respond to the call with the heart of a servant and the courage to lay down their lives for someone they don't know. I ask that you, I ask that when you see a law enforcement officer, please let them know you appreciate them, as well as a firefighter. Marissa, I would like to thank you for the trust and confidence you, trust and confidence in me to serve this community as a police officer and as the department's police chief for the past three years. It has been an honor working for you, and I will miss you. Mayor and councilmen, thank you for the supporting, for supporting me in my role as a police chief, as your police chief. It has been challenging at times, but I have truly enjoyed my career here in Kalinga. Thank you all. City staff, it has been a privilege working with all of you. Keep up the hard work. Shannon, thank you for letting me walk into your office unannounced and just sit there and talk. I appreciate everything you have done for me over the years, and I will miss you. Department heads, Jasmine, I want to thank you for keeping me on my toes. You're like a sister to me. I will miss those early morning text messages and emails from you just saying good morning and rubbing in that you're already at work at 4:00 in the morning. Sean and Greg. Where's Sean? Thank you both for everything you've done for me over the past year. We have become good friends and I will miss our daily banter between the three of us. I can't wait to our next golf outing. It'll be iconic, just like our trip to Truckee. To my family, to my wife, Suzie, I want to thank you for taking, for taking, I want to thank you for taking, I can't even say this, I want to thank you for being there for me, making sure that every time I walked out the door in the morning to go to work or late night call-out, you always gave me a kiss goodbye and made sure you said I love you and be safe. I would try my best not to bring the day's events home with me, but you were there when I needed someone to talk to and when I needed a shoulder to lean on. I want to thank you and I love you. To my two boys, one that couldn't be here this evening, but I know he's here in spirit, Alan and Daniel, when I first started this career, I worked a lot, I worked a lot to ensure there was food on the table, clothes on your backs, and roof over your heads. I have watched you both grow into the men that you are today and excel in everything that you have done. I am proud of the men you have become. You are both my greatest accomplishments and I am proud to be your dad. To my daughter, Kate, when I met your mom, I could tell you were not sure of me. However, I made sure you were included in everything your mom and I did. My day is not complete until I made you laugh or smile. When Kate was in high school, I would give her a hard time about going to the football games to watch her cheer or sitting in the freezing cold watching her play soccer. Kate, I want you to know I would not miss any of those games. I'm your biggest fan and cheerleader. To my staff, I want you to remember one thing. Being a police officer is all about the people you serve. Treat everyone with respect and dignity, and even if they are not treating you the same. Finally, I want to, I want you all to know that I love each and every one of you and it has been a greatest privilege in my professional career to count myself amongst one of you, amongst one of you, to count myself as a member of this extraordinary family in blue. Whatever the future may bring, I will always be able to say I was one of you. I will miss you all. Thank you.
Okay, Darrell, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Kalinga, thank you very much for your 28 years of service here. You started as a kid and now you're leaving as a man. I mean, it was great. I mean, you started from the beginning and you've taken it all the way. So congratulations. I'd like to stand up and give you a standing ovation if everybody would. One thing I wanted to say is you treated everybody equal in this city. I never saw you treat anybody different. It didn't matter their skin, their color, anything. You always treated them the same. So even homeless people, you treated them with respect also. So I just wanted to say that you're a great guy and a good chief.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And if anybody else would like to say anything on the council? I think I've been here almost as long as you have, but not quite. I don't know, I don't know, what year did you start?
I started in September of 95.
Okay, you got me. I started in 97, so.
Got you by a couple.
You do. Congratulations again. Would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done and, sorry, we're all going to miss you. And just because you're going to Texas, you're still going to hear from us all the time, so don't think that you're getting away.
I won't give you my Texas phone.
Suzie already did. And anytime that you come back to Kalinga, we expect you to stop by and see us all.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any staff like to say anything?
I want to say something real quick. I was about 21, 22 years old when you started here. You've been a blessing to my family for what they've been going through. You've taught me something. And you taught me to fight for this community. I've been here all my life, but never one that I ever thought to move because of you. Just like Mr. Mayor said, you were one side for everybody. Not only did you treat people with respect, but you treat them like a community and family. And you're one of the reasons why I'm up here. And I just want to thank you for everything you've done.
Jasmine?
Darren, I got to meet you five years ago, but I think that you're one phenomenal person as an individual. I think, you know, you have so much compassion for everybody. I mean, your heart is just made of gold. And so, like Marissa said, we're going to really miss you and miss you on our team. It's just not going to be the same. And you'll hear from me.
Sure I will. I'll call you later over there, so I'll be up by then.
Anybody else on staff?
It's hard, though, but this has been a, it's been a long, it's been, it's too short. It's been so much fun that it's gone, it feels like we started, you started this as chief yesterday. You know, working for the city and, you know, and providing service to the community is stressful at times. And I think that you were always positive. You always made us laugh. I never knew what was going to come out of your mouth when you walked in my office. But yeah, like Jasmine said, you're a great person. We have enjoyed our times, you know, our golf outings, and being able to really get to know each other personally has been a blessing for me. And yeah, we're going to miss you. And unfortunately, you're leaving and not sticking around. So our foursome, or threesome is going to get a little smaller, but hopefully, you know, we'll be coming to Texas. But no, you're a great friend and a great colleague, and we're going to miss you.
Appreciate it.
I've only known you about a year and a half, but I feel like I've known you my whole life. Our professional relationship was great, but our friendship was even better. And to become so close to somebody in such a short amount of time, I'm going to miss you. And I can't wait till we get to go to Texas and see you back there.
Any officers or staff from the police department? Okay.
Thank you.
Suzie, would you like to say anything? Okay, thank you.
I would like to say one last thing to Greg. When we interviewed you about a year and a half ago, I told the panel that you were the right fit for this community. And I was right. You are the perfect fit for this community. You have turned that fire department around, and you've done a great job. And your men and women like you. You do what's right, and for that, I applaud you. Thank you all.
And thank you. Congratulations again. Now, we're going to go outside this door here, and we're going to go with you to make your last call.
Like to call this meeting back to order. We'll go to item number three, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes, and in accordance with open state meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up. And a report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by five o'clock on the day of the council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included into the record. However, they will not be read. Is there anybody who would like to say anything? Sir?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kenneth Smith. I've been the one that's been cleaning up the side roads and trying to get the trash, you know, pretty much beautify the city a little bit, you know, stop the eyesores and all that good stuff. But, you know, I know I have been asking for donations and stuff with the community and everything like that, but that as of now has changed, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Mid Valley, Joseph Capicop, he has donated all the dumping fees that I'm allowed to bring in, anything I can get off the, out of the creeks and all that good stuff, is all donated now. So, you know, I just wanted to come in here and give a thanks to everybody that's been helping me as the last couple of weeks, three weeks or so. And there's a couple of names that have been donating money to me on my PayPals and stuff like that, and I just want to say thank you to all them real quick. Rita Palacios, Johanna DeVal, Nora Eldridge, Linda Anderson, just to name the few that have helped with the project that I'm trying to start and get going. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the helpers that I've had out there. It started with me by myself, one-man crew, and it's turned into about 20 people out there every time that I'm doing it, and each time we do it, it's growing. So here's just a few names. Bobby, Sheila, Nathan, thank you, Bella, Amanda, Rebecca, Octavio, Rachel Ross, and Nora again. She's been a big donator, and so I just wanted to say thank you to her. But, you know, it's a sad thing to see the community that I grew up in, I lived here all my life, you know, and see all the trash that's around. I know if I'm willing to go do it, you know, I know there's a bunch of community members that can come out and help. So if anybody would like to just come out and help, donate a couple hours of their time, I'm not asking for money, I'm not asking for none of that, I just need some help. And I believe that Kalinga could be beautiful again, you know? And so I just want to say thank you for your time. Excuse my nervousness, but I haven't talked in front of a bunch of people in a long time. Thank God everybody else left. But if it wasn't for the donations and if it wasn't for people's hard work and time, this, it wouldn't be getting done. I've probably hauled off probably about, I would say, 10 tons of trash already, just by myself and with the short crew I've had. And the more the merrier, and I thank you guys for your time, okay?
Thank you very much, Ken. Is there anybody else? Nathan?
Mayor, council. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the work that Kenneth has put in to the community. He started this project, and I helped once, and he's been out there a lot. And I think the city, you know, owes him a debt of gratitude for all the work that he's been doing, and it's been amazing. And I would love it if I could see the, maybe someone contact the county supervisors, since a lot of the work that he's doing is out there in the county area. You know, a lot of it's in the city, but a lot of it's in the county, and it'd be nice to see what we could do about getting the county to send help, because I know that sometimes this may be a revolving door where people are, you know, you know, he showed pictures right where the no dumping sign is, people are dumping. And so it'd be good to try and get some support from the county, so that they can come and, you know, I don't know exactly what they could do, but maybe you guys could call on them to come and help. And then also, I see you guys have a bunch of things on here about, you know, the two additional police corporal positions, fifth police sergeant position, the homebuyer program. I think that all those are great. I think that we're gonna have to do more, though. It's, I mean, I'm a numbers guy, you know, I know that, you know, adding in people and adding positions and adding ranks and all that stuff costs money, but looking at what Fresno and everyone else is going through right now, it's really gonna be a time to where, you know, if we don't want to lose officers like Abara, if he goes, and if we don't want to lose, you know, canines and things like that, we're gonna have to step up our game and really go after that and try and use creative, you know, financing and creative ideas to get those guys to stay and to attract other people. I think you guys have a great group of people that can make that happen. So I just appreciate you guys and everything you're doing, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Nathan. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to public hearings. We have none. We have 17 things on the consent calendar, or nine, I'm sorry, 19. Would anybody like to pull anything?
I don't want to pull anything, I just want to change to number eight. Doesn't really have a radius on how far this officer can live, so I'd like to put in about 50 miles, if that's fair.
I just want to clarify, you said five zero, not one five?
Right, five zero.
Thank you.
Ken, would anybody from the audience like to pull anything? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry.
Item number, I think it's 20 or is it 19 now, since you lost one?
Oh, the person, the rules of procedure?
Yeah.
Would you like to pull that one, then? Okay.
Did you have a specific question about it?
No, no, yeah, yeah, well, oh, there you go, that's right.
I'll explain why I put this on there. Since we have to do annual training anyways on other items, I figured we'd put this in there that way if we need to change it or modify it in any way, we can do it at that time, too.
So just to clarify, at the last meeting, Councilman Horn had asked that it be added as an annual review. So it would probably be every January, we're in February now, but at the beginning of January, because that's usually when we have a new council seated, this item would always appear on the consent calendar, asking the council to review it prior to the meeting, and then someone can pull it and make changes if they wanted to.
Okay. With that, I guess, anybody would like to pull anything else? Seeing none, do I have approval?
I'll make a motion for approval with the change number eight to make it a 50-mile radius, five zero.
A second.
Give the motion a second, roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
Also vote aye. We'll go to item number six, ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Number one, city council discussion and directions related to the six-cycle Fresno County multiple jurisdiction housing element approach. Sean?
Thank you. Mayor and council, excuse me. California Housing, tonight we're just requesting direction of staff to bring back an MOU for approval to participate in the six-cycle multi-jurisdictional housing element. California housing element law requires every jurisdiction to prepare and adopt a housing element as part of the required, as one of the elements of the general plan. It's typical for each jurisdiction to prepare its own separate general plan and housing element. However, in 2016, 13 of the 16 jurisdictions in Fresno County, including the city of Kalinga, with the help of Fresno COG, prepared a multi-jurisdictional fifth-cycle housing element, which in the grand scheme of things is pretty unprecedented for California in terms to have that collaboration. This was unique and helped the number of local cities become compliant with their housing elements for the first time in years. Compliance is important, as many grants and funding opportunities require a current housing element. The six-cycle housing elements are now underway and must be submitted to the state for certification by the end of 2023. While legislative changes have increased the cost and complexity of the housing elements since the fifth cycle, there are some advantages to pursuing the joint effort. Local jurisdictions in Fresno County have again requested Fresno COG to hire a consultant to be paid for by participating member agencies. The housing element is a state-required element of the general plan, is required by law to be completed every eight years. There are definitely benefits to making sure the housing element is completed in each cycle and in time as eligibility for grant funding. Unfortunately, the consequences for inaction, far reach, and the state has issued significant guidance to cities on the consequences of failing, falling short in adopting or otherwise complying with the housing elements. This range, this ranges from legal suits, loss of permitting authority, financial penalties, and court receivership. The attached document by Fresno COG, which I included in the report, provides a more detailed terms of the consequences for non-compliance, which could have significant impacts on the city. Staff has been engaged in ongoing effort with member agencies to develop a plan to undertake the six-cycle housing element, just like the fifth cycle. As the cost is most significant, usually a most significant issue related to this planning document, the multi-jurisdictional approach is the most cost-effective way to complete this document. And I did identify some challenges, I don't have to go through all these, but it's in the report, but there are challenges of the six-cycle housing elements in terms of, and really what's equated to cost, and also staff time and consulting time. And then there's also opportunities with the multi-jurisdictional effort. I want to go through those because they're important, as the economies of scale, the required background report, standardized policies and programs, secret compliance, and a combined community engagement effort will save jurisdictions time and money. Compliance with the housing element law for jurisdictions that may not have the staff or funding to pursue an individual housing element. And then a cohesive approach to addressing new requirements and coordination with HCD, the state agency in charge of certifying the housing element. It is estimated through discussions with several consultants, which COG has gone through, as a total consultant contract is going to be approximately $2 million for this multi-jurisdictional housing element approach, with an estimated cost for each 13 small cities of approximately $115,000 and $180,000 for the city of Fresno and the county of Fresno. The estimated cost is a maximum and could likely be less. Additionally, Fresno COG is working with HCD to determine the regional early action planning grant funding that could be used for the effort to help reduce the costs for participation, participating jurisdictions. Fresno COG will act as the fiscal agent to that participating jurisdiction. That participating jurisdictions do not need to provide their share of the funding upfront. Fresno COG will begin requesting reimbursement monthly after July 2022, so we can incorporate these costs into our 2023 budget. If the city decides to participate in this effort, staff will be bringing back an MOU for the council to approve on February 17, 2022, in addition to authorizing the city to provide COG a $10,000 deposit to begin the effort in confirmation of commitment. That will be the only expense prior to the 23 budget, and staff budgeted $15,000 in the fiscal, in this current fiscal year. As it was expected, there may be some housing element expenses prior to the start of fiscal year 23. So in terms of the fiscal impact, I've discussed, is the share of the housing element is expected to be around $115,000 minus the $10,000 deposit, which will be budgeted in the fiscal year 2023 fiscal year budget, from the community development budget. The only cost within the fiscal year is the $10,000 deposit needed for COG to begin the solicitation process and provide a level of commitment from the participating jurisdictions. Staff has also circulated the MOU with the city attorney, and we've received comments back from them. There were some comments, and surprisingly today, I did receive similar comments back from Fresno COG, I think I forwarded them to Sebastian just today, that kind of reiterated a lot of their comments. And so it looks like there'll be most likely a resolution that comes back with that commitment rather than the MOU. So we may see both, or we may see just the resolution come back to the council. But with that, council, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any. I know sometimes these planning documents can be arduous, there's a lot of state mandates, unfortunately. This, for how many years I've been here, this is my third cycle. They used to not always be eight years, so that's why it's my third. And I did the first one with a consultant on my own, and it wasn't extremely, it was a lot of work. The last cycle with the multi-jurisdictional, it was completely different. The collaboration between all the agencies was amazing, and it saved the city a lot of money. I think it was only $30,000 last time. So you can see the sheer amount of regulatory oversight that the state is encompassing on this specific element of the plan. It's costing consultants a lot of money, and the reason why we have good numbers is because cities in regions, like counties and regions, are on different cycles. So we're on the eighth, we're on the sixth So we're on the eighth, we're on the sixth cycle. Other jurisdictions, other counties have already started their sixth cycle, like last year. So we're already seeing, talking to consultants, they know exactly how much, they know the back and forth they're having with the state. And so unfortunately, these numbers are pretty solid. And I can tell you that jurisdictions that have gone on their own, these numbers can even double or triple if you do it individually.
And we've talked to COG about this, and most cities in our, in our area are going with this cycle. It does save a lot of money. The only ones that might not do it this year, we heard, is the city of Clovis. And this is going on, it's happening at all the city council meetings right now, this month. So just like they said, it was only gonna cost us $10,000 right now, but it sure saves us money in the long run when it's done. And then the fines are just outrageous. If you, if you miss a deadline, the fines are outrageous, and it's getting worse. So myself, I would appreciate a vote, a positive vote for this, so. How would you guys like to do it? Okay, so move forward.
Then we'll come back with the next meeting.
All you need is a comment.
Yep, and we'll bring it back on the calendar next year, next year.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have any announcements? City manager?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know the city spent a lot of time applying for some funds with the Department of Water Resources for a rearage payment on accounts. So it was very time-consuming for the finance staff to go through this process, but we were provided with funds through that program. And so it was a benefit to the ratepayers and those account holders who were delinquent in their utility accounts for water service for the period specified in the program. Due to the COVID pandemic, all received a credit on their bill. It was on the most recent bill that just went out. So when people see a credit, that's what that was, and it did take a lot of staff time to do. And the city itself didn't necessarily benefit from anything. It was credited to each person's account who was eligible, and so that's a great benefit to the community. And then I just wanted to remind everyone that Gimme Love's dinner fundraiser is February 10th, and I believe they still have tickets available for sale.
And also the chamber dinner?
Yes, but it is sold out.
Oh, it's already sold out, okay. Okay. Council members?
I just want to thank Mr. Smith for what he's doing with the whole cleanup. I think we need to see if we could bring something up. I know there's a lot of individuals cleaning up backyards, and it's, you know, ending up in the creek. And a lot of times, you know, I've had asked, some of the workers at Mid Valley, they came by and they say, no, they haven't came by. Well, so I guess I ended up in the creek. It's pretty sad that I would take my dogs with my daughter out in the creek, and it used to be beautiful. And now all you see is, you know, I mean, with the first rainstorm, you just seen everything flowing down. It was nasty, and I would hate, you know, I know there's a lot of community members that just go over there and walk their dogs and everything like that. And I think we need to, you know, like Mr. Bradford said, push for an accounting, see what we could do. Something to bring something up, or even an ordinance of, we can't catch anybody, I know it's a fine, but something where they can make sure that that doesn't happen on the creek, because it's getting really bad. It's really getting bad. And I don't want our town to end up like, you know, not to put them out in Mendota Fireball and everything, you know, all those little towns that, when I would go to, with my kids for football, all you see is on the road 33, just mattresses and everything, just, you know, getting, our community is very, very beautiful, especially during the winter out here. And I would hate to see it be one of those communities like that. So, but other than that, thank you for everybody, everybody that's, you know, you know, congratulations. Thank you for choosing our community, you know, I'll grow it to you, I'll grow in you. So look forward, look forward to it. Other than that, just if everybody could pray for my nephew, his cancer. He's abs, so he's in Stanford right now, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, mayor's announcement. There's one other, Gimme Love for the pounds for, is that still going on?
Yes, so many people in the community will remember Melanie Vargas. And last year, she started the Pounds of Love program at the animal shelter to benefit the dogs at Gimme Love. And so they are collecting dried dog food donations, and you can drop those off at Gimme Love.
Okay, future agenda items? Anybody? Okay, I have one. I told Shannon I was gonna bring this up. I signed a lot of certificates coming from the city, and basically the certificates look like an award you get from grade school. And so I wanted to, and then like the city, the senate and the House of Representatives, they have a really nice fancy one. And right now, I'd like to see the city of Kalinga develop another one and get it going as soon as they could. We're not gonna be have it for this awards we're giving out Saturday. Pardon me? We possibly could. Okay. But I'd like to see something fixed up for us and make something really nice for, to give out to everybody, because a lot of people put those up on the walls and in their businesses and everything, and something from the city of Kalinga, it adds some status.
It's also possible to check into getting a stamp. That way we can stamp press the papers, so it's actually indented into it for the city of Kalinga and whatever else it wanted to say.
We already have one.
Yeah, we have one.
Okay.
It was on the certificates that we gave out tonight.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll add that as an agenda item.
Can I just say, I would be more than happy to take your certificate, clean it up, colorize it, whatever you want done with it, and have it done for this week if you want it. Happy, happy to do it.
Could we go ahead and try, let her try?
We can't, because it's not on the agenda, so we shouldn't be discussing it.
Is that something that would even need to be agendized?
No, not if it's not a cost to the city.
If I just donate it? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. If there's no other future agenda items? Oh, want to make an announcement? We do have the birds out there now. I wrote it today, and.
I have a video of the mayor writing it on the city's Facebook page, if you want to see it.
I didn't know it was on there either. A lot of people are just on the way down here tonight. I saw a lot of people checking them out, and there's lights on them, too. So hopefully everybody follows the rules and stays on the right side. On some of the roads around here, if they're not the new ones, they're kind of bouncy, so hold on, and make sure you have both hands on, because if you take, go with one hand, you start turning. I noticed that. I guess it might be just me, but you start turning, and if you're near a curb, you're gonna hit it. But I didn't fall today, knock on wood. So, but they're a lot of fun. We're gonna go in closed session. We have three items. Are there been anything being announced tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay. With that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and when you see a cop or a.